Had a chance to look at the agenda. If everyone agrees with the agenda, no discussion, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? The agenda's approved. So we'll move right straight on to the recognitions and presentations portion of our meeting. And this is always, as I say every month, my favorite part. So if we can have Dr. Hester come up for the One Nelson Awards.
All right. She need help? In more ways than one. But I think we'll be all right. Appreciate it. All right. So as Ms. Powell just talked about, our One Nelson Awards are something that we give out on a monthly basis to be able to really highlight and showcase some of our individuals, whether they are community members, students, classified employees, or certified employees in order to really promote that mentality of we're all in this together, we're all working together to be able to be the best that we can be. So with further, without further ado, um, hold on a second. Hold on a second for that person. Unless I'm missing something? Okay. All right. So the first person we'll do is our student representative. So Diana, will you come up here with me, please? All right. I'm gonna read this first and then we're gonna take pictures from this nice lady over here. So Diana Salvador Vasquez is our student recipient of the One Nelson Award. Diana exemplifies the One Nelson spirit in every way. She's an English learner and has shown a dedication to her academics as well as maintaining an openness to helping others. She's bold, she is kind, and is undoubtedly a model for others. In addition, Diana is able to leverage her bilingualism as a way to make connections to the use of language. She helps classmates who are not proficient in English without losing focus of her own goals in class. Her English language teacher wrote, Diana is unwavering tenacious through adversity. She has remained focused and dedicated to her goal of academic growth regardless of obstacles. She is kind, open, positive, and generous with constructive advice to others. She displays daily the finest attributes of our top NC community leaders. So congratulations, Diana. I'll take a minute. Congratulations. Let me give you one more thing. All right. Here you go. And as always, we have this little mug that has One Nelson on it. So that is for you. I'm gonna put it back in this box because if I don't, I will drop it and break it and then you'll get mad. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. Next up is for our classified employees. So Ms. Trusslow, will you please join me up here? So you get to get comfortable. All right. So Courtney is always so supportive of the student athletes and all students at RRES. And I've seen, this is from one of your peers, so when I say I, I've seen it too, but I have seen her out numerous times watching and cheering on her students. She serves as the Rockfish bookkeeper and front office secretary, and it is not uncommon to see her all throughout the building, supporting students, staff, and parents. So thank you so much for all that you do for Rockfish. We're gonna, I'm gonna take this and we're gonna, we're gonna look over there to? You got it? Okay, we'll do it again. Thank you so much. All right. So Kristen Catch, will you join me up here, please? All right. So for our certified employees, we have Ms. Kristen Catch. Kristen stepped up, Kristen stepped up to compensate for the extended leave of a colleague during the fall semester to lessen the disadvantage of not having a regular teacher in the classroom for an inordinate amount of time. Her efforts on behalf of students did not go unnoticed or unrecognized. And so in case you don't know, Ms. Casters is one of our special ed teachers and was able to kind of blend in and out of serving not only the services for sped students, but also provide those instructional services for gen ed students in a class that she had been helping out with, but kind of taking on that role is a much bigger endeavor. So we greatly appreciate your efforts in doing that. We know it's not easy, but it was huge for our students and it was huge for us. And I do, on behalf of all, really appreciate that. So thank you very much. We're gonna do this and take our picture. All right. Last but not least, Mr. Johnson, will you come up here for me, please? So last but certainly not least, we want to honor our community recipient for the One Nelson Award. Do you know much about the One Nelson Award? No? Okay. Well, what the One Nelson Award is, is I don't know if you've seen some of our T-shirts and our banners and everything, and it's talking about that person exudes the mentality of being willing to do whatever they can to make everyone else around them successful. And you're one of the first people that people talk about when we talk about One Nelson and how selfless you are in giving back your time, not only in the community, but also for us and helping us out. So we greatly appreciate it. And I'm gonna read to you what one of your peers had indicated to us. Bruce dedicates a lot of his time to the Nelson football team. Bruce has helped our football team for many years. He's at practice, games, and more when he can be. He is positive male role model and genuinely cares about the team. He helps out wherever and whenever he can at games and is always in high, he's always in high Nelson spirit. He loves his community and wants success for all. Bruce puts a lot of time into the football season as a community member, and this would be a well-deserved honor. And that's in addition to all the things to do around our community. So we greatly appreciate you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Paul. Hold on. Don't want to leave without this. And this is your mug. I'll show it to you. It has that One Nelson symbol on it. So we appreciate all that you do and appreciate you being able to make it up tonight. I know you got some people here who never watched that. Thank you very much.
All right. We are down to comments from?
Oh, no. We have one more recognition. How are we gonna skip this? So the recognition we're gonna skip is the recognition of Ms. Powell for being one of our leaders and our chair of the school board and participating as the delegate for the 2023 VSB A Delegate Assembly. So we're skipping this.
We always say that the recognitions, especially those One Nelson Awards, are our favorite part of the meeting because it really does acknowledge and highlight the good work that's being done out within their schools and within our community. Thank you, guys. We appreciate all that you do. So we're down to the portion of comments from board members. Mrs. Claire, can I start? I know, poor thing, you're on.
I know. You always make me start and then I always forget what I'm gonna say. But anyway, thank you, Shannon, for being such a great chair and for doing all of the hard work, and I know how hard it is of your position and making it be, it's been pretty easy this year for us, hasn't it? Yeah. So I know that you're working hard, you know, to help it be easy for me. Also, I agree, the awards, I wish the whole meeting was just awards to be on. And I think we could do that, actually, but we have work to do too, so unfortunately. I also, unfortunately, did not get to see the one act play, but I wanted to say, you know, congratulations to the cast and crew of that play, that for coming in, you know, for, again, being so, you know, representing us so well. So, and I can't think of anything else to say. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Chief?
Would like to echo what Margaret had to say. Shannon, thank you for everything you've done. For those of you that don't know, Ms. Powell decided, agreed to take an extended tour as chair so that we could change the timing that we were electing our chair. And although some of us tried to get her to do it indefinitely, she wouldn't agree to that. But you've done a fantastic job and really appreciate everything you've done because it is hard work. And like Ms. Claire, I was not able to see the one act play. That's the first time in many years that I've not been able to see it. And that's unfortunate, but they always do such a great job. And Ms. Driver and everybody else on staff brings all of this wonderful talent out of these kids. It's just amazing to me, and I say this every time I talk about it, that she'll take a kid that says, "Well, okay, I'll get on stage, but don't make me sing." And then all of a sudden, they're doing a solo. You know, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing. She does it with the musical and the one act play. And just what a great, successful program that we have here and talented kids. We're almost done with the first half of the school year, and that is fantastic. And only have, what, one more day, right? For that.
Long as you're here.
Also, the One Nelson Awards, I want to echo that. That is, that is also my favorite time of the meeting because we get to recognize people. So glad that you got recognized, Bruce, for everything that you have done. I won't, I hate to put you on the spot, but what year did you start being affiliated with the football program? Oh, eighty-two. Okay. All right. So, yeah. All right. Cool. So we're looking at forty years of service, and it's forty years of volunteer service, and it's without fail. And he volunteers in other places, too. He's been a member of the Livingston Volunteer Fire Department for longer than that. Forty-some-odd years, a long time. I think it goes back to before he had a driver's license, you know, which is fantastic. And that's not to take away from the other award winners because everybody has done a fantastic job. And that's what this is about, is recognizing the teamwork that everybody has, as an individual, puts into it. So thank you for everything that you do.
Mrs. Turner Giles?
Yeah. So I think nothing really to add except for I did get to see the one act play. Not once, but twice. It was absolutely amazing. And one of our student reps was one of our stars in the play. Just an amazing, amazing play. Ms. Driver just outdoes herself every year. But I also want to say, because I'm looking at Mr. Mullins, what a great fall banquet you pulled together. I absolutely loved how you changed it up and everyone was together. And it was nice to see all of the athletes, all of the parents, just everyone in one setting. So thank you for the efforts that you did for that as well.
I will echo what they said, and I want to add a couple of quick things. We've had a lot going on this month, a whole lot of things. And one of the things we talk about with this One Nelson Award and our hope as a board is seeing our community, our families, and our teachers and our staff all come together. And that has been apparent when I look at the elementary school functions, all of the activities you've done at Rockfish, at Ty River, the middle school, even the high school. So it's been so wonderful to see all of that on social media because that's extra time and effort out of a long day that you all are already doing. So thank you. I think the family engagement has been incredible, and we see that. So thank you. We also had a parade with a really cool bus. Was that, whose dog was that?
That was Nancy.
Nice, nice dog. So love the dog. But the parade, if you saw, if you were at the parade or got to watch the parade streaming, thank you, Mr. Cargill, for doing that. That's a lot of effort on top of what you're doing. It looked really good. Thank you. We also had, I don't know if people noticed this, the elementary schools now have a color guard between both schools.
I heard about that.
Love that collaboration. That's, that's really cool. And again, extra time out of somebody. So we appreciate all of that. CNA certification, so we see the academic side of things that are going really well. CNA certifications this week, I see, what was the certifications, the?
ISEV.
ISEV certifications. So so much good going on on the social side of school as well as the academic side of school. And I just want to highlight, I know we didn't touch on it all, and I kind of almost hate to start doing this because there is so much going on, I'm afraid I'm gonna miss something. But I will say, my absolute favorite thing that I've seen through social media and at the schools was the high school with Cousin Eddie. If you did not see that post and you know Christmas Vacation, it was absolutely cute. So well done to everybody on all that you've done this last month. Thank you. Happy, and as a board member and individual board member, happy holidays to everybody. Please go take the time to rest, reset, and come back next session. Thank you. I will say this before we continue on. If you are here to be recognized, you do not feel like you have to stay through the rest of the meeting. We appreciate you being here. We thank you. But if you want to run away while you can, please feel free to. You won't tell us by any means. But congratulations to each other. Important dates, tomorrow's, I think the most important date is tomorrow's the last day of the semester. And then we'll be in winter break till January first. Instructional planning and professional development, those the second and third, and then your students will return January fourth. So those are really the, quickly the biggest dates. Pressing report cards go out on January fifth. We start VSB A meetings again next year, so I know that Tammy keeps that calendar updated there, the link to it. So if there's anything you want to participate in, please let Tammy know that you'll be doing that. And any other dates we need to add in?
Do we have budget dates in that? Are we putting budget dates in that? Because I knew we have that big calendar.
And I think we have that sub calendar.
I think you have one of them in there, which was the budget distributed on the eleven.
Maybe moving forward, if we can throw in the planning day, the meeting dates, and then the planning dates and disintegrate that into the important dates, that'll help us, at least me and my old green, keep it all organized.
I put them on my regular calendar, I think.
All right. Anything else with dates? All right. Good enough. Dr. Hester, comments from you?
All right. Well, I will start off on a little bit of a more serious note. So I just, I do want to acknowledge the event that occurred in Amherst earlier this week involving elementary students and the exposure to fentanyl. And we are so thankful that those children are okay. This is a scary situation because what seems like an innocent situation where you're sharing food, sharing some gummies, that it can turn into such a devastating result. And it's hard sometimes to understand when we ask parents or anyone, hey, please do not bring in food items that are not store-bought or in its original sealed packaging. And we're in a rural community, right? So what do we do well? We cook and we bake well. And it's nothing against that. It's just in our world right now, with all the various allergies is one side of it. But potential exposure to some substances that could be really negative and detrimental. And so we just, we just remind people to have those conversations. We are so fortunate here that we belong to the community eligibility program, which any of our students that goes through the breakfast or the lunch line will be fed. So we will not, we fully support our children being fed and not going hungry. So that need to share, just because someone may not have food to eat and be hungry, that's always a tough, it's tough for a kid to say no, but we've got to be really, really vigilant. We've had, you know, some communications with our principals about, please reiterate, not sharing food. And that's tough. It's tough to monitor that, but just kind of educating and through no, not always nefarious situations, just inadvertent exposure to some things that are taking place when you bring items in from the outside. And so I just really encourage our parents to have those conversations. We're heading into the winter break, so we have one day. But, you know, we'll try to also maybe reiterate this as we move forward. It's scary, and we just want all of our students, you know, whether they're here in our county or they're in Amherst or all throughout the Commonwealth, we're all experiencing these types of things. This just got a little bit closer to home, and it's kind of out there. So we just need to, you know, acknowledge that it's there and then begin to try to prepare for that and just be smart about what we do. So I hate starting out as a little bit of a Debbie Downer on that one, but I really feel like it's important to, you know, we reached out to Amherst and said, you know, I'm sorry you're having to go through this, whatever we can do to support you. But this could easily be us, and we want to just make sure we take care of what we can. So transitioning into more positive news, I want to reiterate the congratulations to our one act play with Runner Up for the States. They did a fantastic job. So I just appreciate the work of the students, Mr. Coy, Ms. Driver, and all their hard work. And really looking forward to March. It's March with Mamma Mia. So we're really looking forward to that coming in. Also, congratulations to all those students who participated in the fall sports. Ms. Turner Giles mentioned you had your end-of-year celebration and, kind of festivities. And like you said, it was great to have everybody together. So I appreciate that and just congratulations on completing that season. And we have all our winter sports starting back up. We also had our winter choral and band concerts take place over the last week and a half, and they did a fantastic job with that and very entertaining, you know, especially the last series with the band with the cowboy hats and it just different rendition of the holiday songs was really cool. I appreciate the creativity with that. So thank you to Mr. Belcher and Mr. Kirchner for taking the lead on that. I know we're all excited about the pending completion of the high school and middle school roof project. I know it's been, it's been going on, and we're all pretty excited that the end is near, barring any weather delays. And we're anticipating the completion of the asphalt part by December 22nd. So when we come back from break, we should not be in that phase. We'll be working on maybe like metalwork and framing and things of that nature. So I know we have an individual here to be able to talk about some things. So, but again, we really look forward to that completion. Just any update on the Rockfish Ivy Creek? I know we get some questions about this. We do participate in the prep program and Ivy Creek. There are still so early on in any kind of conversations about the relocation of the program since Albemarle is now pulling out on that now, but they've indicated they're pulling out of the program. So regardless, it has to be relocated. There's been some conversation about possibly Rockfish. It's so early in the conversation, and there's a lot of road to cover before that ever gets any potentially of the serious considerations of it. So I don't want anybody to feel like we're anywhere near anything before we even get to the part of having a community discussion. We need some answers. We need some more information. So just want to update people on that to let you know where we are. I've been in communications with their executive director, so there's nothing formal in the works. There's nothing about to happen, so I don't want anybody to feel that they may have missed a memo somewhere. Also, I appreciate that our staff gets to hear that those community engagement efforts are recognized and appreciated. And the reason why I say that is you acknowledge that it does take a lot of time. It is effort, and it takes a lot of investment on behalf of all of our staff to do that. So how nice it is to hear that it's recognized and appreciated. And so that's really, really important. And last but not least, tomorrow is the last day of classes of the first semester, and students going on break. We're finishing up winter growth assessments and other assessments and, of course, SOLs and making things up. So I just want to say thank you for the effort and pushing hard to finish strong. January 2nd, return for our staff. January 4th, return for our students. So thank you very much for allowing me that time, but I think it's important.
Now, we're down to our student reps. Can you guys give us some update on how things are going and what's happening?
Winter sports just started. Today was the second-to-last day. We also have a pep rally tomorrow, and I know there's some teacher participation, so everyone's really excited about that. And again, yeah, so the one act came in second, I think it was last week. It was very exciting. Everyone worked really hard, and I was really glad to be a part of all that. This week, we also had, I think it was called Coins in Cans or something like that. It was the FFA. They donated, like, they donated money that was raised by students and teachers to St. Jude, and they took those cans to the local food pantry.
Thank you, guys. Good job. So we're down to public comments that we got. I think we have a few public comments tonight. So let me remind you that when you want to call your name, come up, state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Just to let you know, we will not respond to what you speak. We're just listening to what you have to say. So here, one only public comment is Wendy Lane, please.
Forgive me, I look like an elf. Thank you. Good evening, school board members, superintendent Hester, fellow teachers, and Nelson County staff. My name is Wendy Lane, and I live on St. George Avenue in Crozay. I've been a special educator at Rockfish River since 2017. I come before you today representing over fifteen full-time staff at Rockfish River with a humble request. The request is this: We respectfully ask that the board consider adopting a policy that allows the transfer of accumulated sick leave to eligible employees and their immediate family members for unplanned, serious medical conditions. This type of policy would help fill the financial gap once the employee's sick leave has run out, but the medical leave is still necessary for our fellow colleagues. Currently, Nelson County has a policy for a sick leave bank program. However, it's kind of unclear if this option is still offered upon initial employment or that it applies to newer employees who are under VRS's hybrid or plan to structure. Regardless, many Nelson County student, Nelson County employees have a strong desire to be able to participate in a voluntary sick leave donation program as demonstrated through the results of an informal survey that was conducted at our school. Over twenty-one full-time staff are willing to donate more than sixty-eight days right now to our fellow employees who are in desperate need of this type of financial relief. In fact, several school divisions in our area, I, just a quick search, and I appreciate Dr. Hester really following up with us in our requests and concerns. People like Albemarle County, Augusta County, Campbell County, and notably Louisa County themselves have policies in place that do that or address the sick leave situation, and we understand that it's complicated. Nelson County could look towards these divisions to help develop a policy quickly if needed or at the beginning of the school year. We know that it's difficult. We're asked to do difficult things as teachers and as staff, and so we respectfully ask that the work be done to be able to do that. So it applies to all employees. I can come up with various reasons why donating accumulated sick leave in this manner is better than the use of sick leave in other alternatives, such as excessive and arbitrary use of sick leave by departing or retiring employees that negatively impacts our students. We know we get paid pennies on a dollar when we retire for our sick leaves and for being healthy and showing up even when we're not. And so why not adopt a sick leave donation policy that puts money in the hands of our fellow employees who need it the most, when they need it the most? By doing so, we can all truly emulate the true meaning of One Nelson. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments? All right. Thank you very much. So we're down to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about the two items on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole?
I move we approve the consent.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone abstain? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you all very much. Um, first item for information, again, we see this every month, it's the meeting minutes, the first reading. Please look through those, um, minutes from the November ninth regular school board meeting. If you have any questions, any adjustments that need to be made, please reach out to Mrs. Ponton in regards to those prior to the second reading. And now, Mr. Campbell and Ms. Irvin, if they can give us please a capital improvement plan update.
We've got several things, several many things to talk about tonight. I'd like to, uh, before we get started into the renovation conversation, uh, invite Brian Foley up from the Goller Manufacturing Company that we bought the roofing material from. He's going to give us a schedule of what the rest of the project looks like and when we can expect to wrap this up, so.
Probably as a reminder for the public, it's fair to say that we started this project last fall. Um, working with a vendor to, uh, supply the materials. We ordered the materials back in, uh, mid to late December. And we actually started the project as soon as kids left in May. So the project has been ongoing, um, from the time that kids walked out of the door almost until now. Uh, we did some of the, um, more treacherous work, I guess, at the very beginning over the summer. We had to do the asbestos abatement that we couldn't do while the building was occupied. And so there were some reasons why the building was tackled the way it was strategically to be, um, as, um, less noisy for the academic wing and also to get the asbestos done. And so, um, unfortunately, the part that was left of putting the roof on has, um, been a little inconvenient and, um, the smells have been, um, unpleasant to say the least. And we just wanted to explain the why behind why we are where we are. And thankfully, um, the smelly part hopefully will be over in December and, um, the metalwork will be concluded in January. So, um, Brian is here to talk to you a little bit about the progress we've made and, um, what the roof looks like now. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah. So we started the section back here where there was some asbestos, so it was a little delay into these sections. We kind of got through all that. Um, we've kind of worked away from here, over the here. And at this point, everything's been roofed, is all complete except the section in red and the orange. The section red has not been touched yet. That's the front office. The section orange was cafeteria and kitchen. It's, it's been roofed the first layer. The second layer still has to go on. So we've stopped using the asphalt for now, so there's no more odors. They're going to do these two during the Christmas break. It should be completely done, hopefully by the end of next week, possibly a little bit into the following week. At that point, they're going to actually come remove all that equipment and take it back to Tennessee where they came from, and so they'll be completely offsite. The highly blue is going to be the metal that they have to put on the outside of the building. That's going to start next week. They just, they're just finishing all the metal in the back. It's, it's taking a little bit longer than expected. We're hoping they'll be out of here by end of the year, but it looks like this metal is going to go through probably the end of January. All that is going to entail is just, just metal and screws, so there's going to be screwing metal into the top of the pringer. And there'll be some sound with it, but there's, there's no adhesives, no smells and whatnot. And on these sections, they might still do a little bit of touch-up work, but that's, that's just stuff that's being stuck on, like sticker-type items. There's no adhesives or smells or anything, so should be pretty much through with all the smelly stuff. Um, I want you guys to get back from break and should be ready to move out of here for you guys, yeah. I apologize for any inconvenience with anything else. It's roofing, so it's got, some things that come with it.
Any questions?
Yeah, could you remind us again what the total square footage is on this project?
Uh, it's like a hundred seventy-six thousand square feet.
That's a lot of square feet.
That's a big, big school.
That's right. So we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
And I think it's for the flexibility and the willingness to work, like when you've said, we need to, we need to press pause on this area. We need to, something's not working out. I do appreciate the flexibility because it's not easy in dealing with this much square footage and kids and staff and all of that. And, and being mindful of, we're trying to make decisions based off of their safety and productivity and all of that, so I appreciate it. That's not easy. And, and every time we ask for, uh, a move or it delays. And so part of that is, uh, we appreciate, um, your understanding and willingness to work with us.
Yeah, and Les and his team as well. We've been working close with them. I mean, alternating units, shutting this one off, turning this one on and try and do everything we can to make it as convenient for everyone in the schools.
When you met with us, I guess a year ago, you were brought in and we've not worked with you before. And I kept thinking, so promising all this stuff, is he really going to be able to do it? It has been impressive to watch how you and your team have worked and it's, it, it's been very positive for us. So we appreciate the partnership.
It's a leak-free roof for many decades to come.
And, and that's the thing we need to keep focused on, right, is that that roof was an issue.
Yes.
And this is not something that will need to be touched within.
Thirty, forty years.
Except for putting the solar on. That's next.
We'll see. Well, this roof can handle it, so.
But, but yeah, and I, and I think it's important to note that, I mean, unlike in some years past, I mean, part of our roof had gotten to a point where we had to make a decision on whether to remove some of this, uh, asbestos and things to go ahead and replace it, and, um, that's a big undertaking. And now that is done and we don't ever have to worry about that part again. Um, and that will help the longevity of the roof as well because all the underlying materials are also new.
Thank you. Well done.
I guess we'll, uh, roll into, so we talked a little bit about, a bit about the renovation coming up. Um, as everybody knows, Shannon worked her magic and we was awarded, um, grant money for part of the renovation, the construction, uh, grant of, uh, ten percent. So what we decided to do is look through the entire presentation that was given to us by Mosley and find some standalone items that we could, uh, satisfy this grant with without being integrated into the larger renovation portion. Um, so we went through the whole list and selected a few items, um, to replace during this period of time. There's going to be a mixture between some HVAC, AC equipment and some of the elevator, um, down to a few compressors and things of that nature. So, uh, the first one here is the air-cooled chillers. Uh, we already had purchased one, uh, last January with, um, the remaining extra funds we had. Um, that's, that's the one that is going to be delivered in March. So, uh, we decided, there's three of them there. They're over twenty years old. So we decided, let's replace the other two while we're here and we can start off with three big chillers. Uh, so there's, this is the one hundred ton and the two hundred ton left to replace there on the backside of the high school. So all three of those chillers will be new once we complete that.
So you'll see that the, um, bid that came in from Honeywell for that project was six hundred and forty-four thousand. That is, um, off of a TIPS contract with a, it's a national contract that has been already bid on a national basis. So it should be the best quote that we could have gotten individually.
That's just a picture of whatever it had. Um, the next one is the water-cooled chiller that supplies the HVAC, the air conditioning in the vocational wing. This one has, is attached to the, um, cooling tower outside the big silver thing up front of the building there. Uh, we just replaced that a few years back, so the decision was made to replace this instead of trying to pipe everything over to add another air-cooled chiller. Um, didn't want to, we just replaced that, like I said, so we decided to change the chiller out. This is a hundred and seventy-one ton, um, chiller down in the vocational wing. This, the pricing with this also includes the, all the chiller pumps and controls with it.
And that price was six hundred and fifteen thousand.
Next, there's four gym, they're cooling units on top of the high school gym. Um, they are, believe it or not, a nineteen ninety-eight models. Um, so we've got our money's worth out of those. Uh, as you can see here, the price here is two seven, two hundred and seventy-two thousand to replace those four units, um, on top of the roof. That includes all the crane rentals and things of that nature that they would have to. And I've already spoken to Brian about where we've already put the roof on. He's going to come out during that period of time and make sure everything is tied back in like it should be, so. And next is coming up is going to be, um, the lighting upgrade to the auditorium. This includes all, it's, it's around a hundred and two can lights, uh, replacing those, uh, with LED fixtures. Um, it, it includes the wall sconces, the stage lighting, all the gel packs on the stage, uh, the control board in the sound room and all the, the demeracs, upgrade to the demeracs. Um, so that, that price come in at two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And this company specializes in theaters and auditoriums, so, um, this has the blessing of our drama teacher and our band teacher. So, um, we're excited to be able to work with them. And they're excited about the possibility.
And they have done some workforce in the past, so we do know their qualities. And those are just pictures of the demeracs, uh, that would be changed out. They, they will, the cabinets will stay, but the, the insides will be, uh, replaced out. Next is the control, uh, the, uh, circuit pan, lighting panel on the football field. Um, I think we've discussed this in the past. The, the breakers are obsolete. We can't get any breakers anymore. This price here includes, so several years back, we had the, the one light pole that's inside the football field. Actually, the wire broke in, under the ground, and we had a company come in and bore new wiring in, but we tied it into the field house. There's a, a different disconnect, so that's not tied into the, the other lighties. So we're talking to Musco, who actually was the ones that put in our baseball softball field lighting. They are going to trench it over to tie back into that light. Part of this pricing also includes, they're going to put the controls in. So in the future, when we want to upgrade to LED lights, the controls will already be in place. Um, and we do have, uh, we have a budget figure of that too. I didn't share it tonight, but we do have a budget figure, figure to update those lights when that time comes. But that, that price includes installing the controllers, so we, I mean, one less thing we have to pay for when it comes time to upgrade the lights. These are separate pictures of, of what we face when we open that cabinet up. Next is the, uh, this is the domestic hot water heater. It's the huge tank down in their CTE boiler room. Um, it supplies all the hot water to the entire complex. As you can see, it's starting to seep. I don't know how many more years that air, air vessels get inspected, um, every two years. I don't know how many more years they're going to allow us to pass this, so we've included that on the scope of work. In this pricing here, this, so there's several things in this pricing. It's the tank, it's the insulation, it's several circulating pumps. And also in this pricing, um, we looked at, um, two compressors. There's one air compressor down in the CTE wing that supplies all the pneumatics for all of our, um, HVAC equipment. And, um, that one has failed us a couple of times. If, that was actually the one that we had to miss school for, for that one day when the motor broke. Uh, we've identified that to replace. Um, there's another compressor on, in the CTE wing that's, um, supplies the air to all the pneumatic tools for all the shop areas. So we've identified both of those to replace. Uh, and also in this, um, and we'll talk about the elevator when it comes up, but, uh, the elevator, the upgrade requires some different, um, new updated, uh, controls. So in that requirements, it, it requires to have its own, uh, heating, cooling system in place on its own thermostat. So it's in the old wing, so as we know, we either heat or we cool. We can't do both. So in this pricing includes, um, a mini split unit to go into that area, the elevator control room, uh, too. So it's on its own unit. And then also another mini split unit that goes into the main server room of the high school. I know Mike would appreciate this. Um, that, this serves as a backup cooling unit. Uh, the one that's, that's in there is old and it hasn't worked for a while. So it has cost more to, uh, repair than to replace. So we identified that as well into this pricing here to replace, so there'd be two mini split units into that pricing as well.
At the risk of steam, um, would you ever consider like a, uh, on-demand heating for water instead of having a big tank?
Uh, the, the, the issue would be the capacity, the storage capacity, the backup as far as that, that entire complex. If we were, if we were to have the separate, the two schools separated, and George, you can probably speak to this too, we probably would be okay with that scenario. But where we have the entire complex, that's our hot water that feeds our kitchen, um, and it has our entire school. So you have to have a storage backup to be able to, um, compensate for that. So that's everything on that item number. The elevator, um, this is going to be, this is a modernization, not a, so a lot of the inner components will be replaced, uh, one of which is they, they have to put a new disconnect in and it has a new feature. It's called battery down. So if it loses power, it's got battery backup that, that lets the elevator down. That's new requirements. So, uh, and we don't have a disconnect in this, in the, with this elevator, so that's, we, we're going to have to do some electrical work to go along with this. But the cart, uh, the, the front door and all the inner workings of the elevator will be modernized and upgraded to a modern elevator. Okay. Next, we identified, uh, the seven CTE garage doors. Uh, we've, we've had issues with these over the years, uh, cables breaking, um, the doors getting something under them and getting wedged and have to call someone out to repair them. These doors have more than served their purpose and, uh, they're heavy. And my concern is with the cables, with these heavy doors, um, starting to become a safety issue. So we've identified, there's seven doors altogether on the CTE wing. Uh, we've replaced those with a modern roll-up type door, an insulated door, um, that will, uh, much lightweight and, uh, I think be more efficient for us. And those are those two compressors I was talking about earlier.
So believe it or not, our grant award was two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. The total of all of these projects is totaled to be two million, four sixty-six, two oh one eighty-four. So we're about fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand, four ninety-eight, eighty-four over what our budget was, which I think is, is pretty, pretty close. Um, and we feel like we can absorb that within our regular operational budget, but there will be some incidental costs, as Les was talking about, electrical work, um, from other vendors to, to be able to make some of these things, um, actually work. So, you know, there will be some additional costs, but we felt like this met the intent of the grant and, um, would be within their guidelines. So these were the projects that we would propose to you tonight to give us, uh, we would ask that you give us the authority to sign off on them so that we can meet the twenty-first, that, um, deadline to have these under contract so that, uh, we can get to work on them to hopefully be reimbursed by June thirtieth.
And I think it's also important to note that if you take a look at the thoughtfulness of all the different projects that are interrelated, is it, is it, it isn't just focused on one department, one thing. It is whole building, which is all of our students. It is performing arts, something that is needed anytime you've been in our auditorium. It's CTE, it's outdoor athletic fields. It is, it is looking at, you know, all of our different departments, all of our different needs, not just concentrated in one area. So we're continuing to build upon that and looking at the longevity of our building and trying to extend it and try to make it sustainable and as, as useful as we can. And I think that that's, I appreciate, it does, it's not. And I think that that's, I appreciate, it does, it's not easy. One, finding the 2.4, 5, 6 million dollars and making it come out to that, but the independent projects that then still contribute to the overall potential innovations that we want to look to do at this building. So I appreciate, one, going after the additional funding that is not to our taxpayer, but also thoughtfully looking through what's the biggest bang for the buck and how we can keep this going and really positively impact our building.
You have any questions that we could answer?
A couple. What type of schedule, kind of, because these are individual projects?
So what kind of schedule are you looking at start to finish? I mean, is it, are they all going to be simultaneous or? So some of them actually have some turnaround time periods. The elevator specifically is an eight-month turnaround time period. So anticipate these are going, some may fall into, be going on together. But some are, like the elevator, for example, we're going to have to schedule for the summertime when those students are in the building, things of that nature. So we, I suspect we're going to have to sit down and sharpen our pencils and get a schedule, a tight schedule on how we're going to get this done in the time period we have to do it.
There's a 12-month completion, right? Is this one, the one that's tied to 12 months?
Well, the way the grant was written, the funding is through June of '24. Most of these projects have significant down payments that you need to order the equipment. So a lot of the grant will be spent on day one as we're making the purchase deposits. The way that the grant was written, though the funding ends on June 30th of '24, it's subject to reappropriation by the general assembly. So I feel like they will do another appropriation because of the lead times of this equipment is so far in the future.
But the operational portion of that will be this year potentially?
Yes.
And I think he's a great project because he covers a lot of ground that.
We've been talking about for a long time, you know, building systems and things like that. What are we doing in regards to inspections for these individual projects? Is that something you're going to be handling or is that something Mosley's going to be doing?
So in, in the, in the specs, it does not probably have to be. We would inspect or have Mosley inspect or bring in a third-party inspector to kind of, to inspect these after they complete. But Mosley has been willing to help us out, so they may be, be the ones we may call on to.
They actually wrote the specs from what we sought bids upon.
Great work. Thank you.
Yet again, those kinds of, for sure. Thank you guys. Thank you. And I appreciate the, you know, one of the things I think you talked about in one area was that did we pass inspection this time? But will we next time? And I wish we could get ahead on these projects where it's not a crisis mode when we fix it, but we get ahead of that crisis mode. So thank you. All right. Next item for information that we are to is, Ms. Douglas, I think you're on here a few times. So we're going to talk about the program of studies for '24, '25. Hard to believe, though.
Very hard to believe. As usual, we are currently just reviewing and reevaluating what we do for registration, scheduling, any of our protocols and just annual review over all of our program of studies. So the first thing that I wanted to mention is, I think later in the list, but it's the registration and orientation schedule. We put this out every year and the reason that we do that is to stay organized on top of things in order to provide the best scheduling situation for our students. So looking at the best academic scheduling for students and the pathways and programs for graduation and post-graduation. Our students are able to have access to, of course, their counselors for that purpose, the school visits that are listed in this registration document, the selection of courses deadlines and their orientations at each of the schools. So I just wanted to make note of that because it's a really important part of this process. The only changes that we have as major changes in this document are the August dates for the potential for transition and kindergarten registration nights. Looking at that, we backed up registration this past year. We're planning to do that again. And then looking at head start transition and kindergarten transition nights, we're looking at an August possibility for that. Some divisions around us do that. It seems to be welcomed by the teachers and the parents as they get ready and prepare for the new school year. Next on the list is our program of studies. And for that document overall, we don't have a lot of major changes in that document. Some edits and some movement around of information. The only change that I wanted to point out was that there's a comment in the CTE section and that's highlighted in yellow. And that's in reference to student attendance, participation and discipline. Again, just due to the course requirements for CTE courses. We thought that was important to add to each of those areas. I'd like to talk about new course proposals. We have several of those this year. We've got three that are core with math and science. One of those new course proposals for math or science is through the PVCC Dual Enrollment Coordinator. The head advisors that we needed to replace the Bio 107. That's no longer allowed as a scientific course completion for the one-year certificate or associate's degree with PVCC. So we're submitting course for proposals for the two online science courses that meet that requirement. One is physical geology and one is historical geology. Next on the list is something that we are very excited about and that's a data science proposal for a math course. It's the critical examination of questions and supports and informed data. So looking at that driven, data-driven decision-making. And when you look at those transitions for 2023 mathematics standards, that's going to be a core component for 2024 when we start the school year in the fall with those new standards and fully implemented. And with those goals for that data science course, they include mathematical problem solving, communication, reasoning skills, connections and representations in mathematics. And instruction must develop those students to become, so I guess the, the areas of computational fluency, the conceptual understanding of mathematics and numbers, algebra readiness skills. So all of those prepare our students for different career fields. Machine engineers, data analysts, and the big one on the radar right now, AI. So we really are excited about that course. I wanted to ask Ryan Yarzvensky to join me for some CTE course additions as well.
So in Ms. Douglas's proposal for new courses, there are seven CTE courses listed. It is not our desire nor expectation to implement seven courses simultaneously in one semester, obviously due to sequencing the courses and potential personnel and resource issues. But our goal is to get them in the master schedule so students are aware of their options and to leverage that master schedule to do three things. One, to meet, meet our students' wants and our needs. Two, to fill gaps in the local and regional job market and give our students opportunities and skills to, to fill those gaps. And three, to create CTE completers so we can meet our benchmarks for the standards and qualities. So outlining the courses, the first would be a second Teachers for Tomorrow or TFT II class. And again, this is continue our collaboration with the University of Lynchburg in aligning our program with their expanded DE offerings and continuing TFT training to two courses. This will provide two semesters or a year-long sequence worth of teacher prep courses aligned with both VDOE competencies and the SARA Teacher Cadet Curriculum. It would also provide more opportunities for work-based learning, both inside the division at Ty River and Rockfish where our kids are placed sometimes, and also with local and external agencies such as Woodland and with MACA. It also creates a more robust offering in a grow your own initiative and it's going to align with objectives and benchmarks set forth by the Office of School Quality, which I just learned about this morning and it'll be coming out next semester. Second course in there is career strategies. And this course will leverage a solution for students who seek to apply for work release their senior year, who have not yet met the criteria for the CCCRI index or the College Career and Civics Readiness Indicator. Essentially, it can connect the school and employer, creating a work-based learning experience, work-based learning experience for students. It will, for students seeking employment or who have signed for employment. A training plan related to both the academic and career goals will be created, followed and reflected upon throughout the duration of the student's enrollment and employment. Good way to leverage some extra numbers for the CCCRI. In the Ag program, there was a application for three courses. Introduction to Agricultural Power, Agricultural Power Systems and Agricultural Fabrication. These three, excuse me, these three courses are the nexus of student interests and three current and very popular programs, Ag, Auto and Welding. The introduction course will provide a comprehensive overview of skills and processes of Ag mechanics, fabrication and construction. Power Systems dives deeper into engines, powertrains, hydraulics and fuel systems. And while Agricultural Fabrication will hit on metal fab, welding and cutting. Any two will equate to a sequential completer sequence and students will have access both to industry credentials and small engine repair and welding. And it'll also allow us to revisit some of our old FFA competitions and small engine repair. We used to be very competitive in, when McCann was here. And the last two is Electrical One and Electrical Two. And these new offerings are leveraging our CTE staff's current areas of certification to meet the, both the interests expressed by students and areas in the regional job market. Electrical One and Two will each serve as a single semester, single credit course and combined will create a completer sequence with state industry credentials and WBL opportunities, both for NCC Ecore and Level One assessments. I'll note that both the Ag Power and the Electricity sequences were identified in last year's Perkins Five application as potential programs and therefore they've already been applied and approved through DOE. They agree it's a good way to meet the needs of the local job market and our students.
And I want to add that one of the courses that was suggested is for, proposed rather, is an opportunity for our students to work with MACA Head Start Program. We're looking at that early childhood program that they're trying to start with MACA at our elementary schools that would involve two-year-olds. So that would be an opportunity potentially for our students in those courses for Teachers for Tomorrow too, to participate in a work-based learning opportunity. And that is all for new course proposals. Any questions on that information? Great. Thank you. The next thing that I want to transition to is with Title One. And I want to explain a little bit about this before I ask for your signature on this information. This is a purpose, the purpose for Title One. Title One overall, if you're not aware of that information, it really provides fair and equitable, high-quality education for our students and particularly the students that are in those lower achievement, they have achievement gaps. And then students that are not, they have a more, I guess, support is needed, is what I should say. Support and for the school environment overall and personnel and through professional development can provide that support, not only to students, but to parents. So really it allows for, to close the educational achievement gap with those students. And then we do that through a variety of ways. So like I mentioned, the professional development piece for teachers and then support for parents that come into our schools and what they can do for students at home. And a big part of that is actually a family engagement piece. And I think you mentioned earlier, you know, some of the things going on in our schools, whether it's elementary schools, middle and high. With Title One, we transitioned a few years ago to school-wide Title One. So both of our elementary schools are now school-wide. And in the school-wide application, you transition where all funds can be spent for all students in the building. So that's a difference from where we were maybe 10 years ago. So transitioning, I think, three or four years ago into that mode. When we write the school-wide application, we have to provide a component that's a plan for school-wide and it includes not only the academic proponents, but also the, what we're doing to work with families. So you increase that engagement from the community, you increase family involvement, and then you also help to support students academically at home. So what kind of resources are you providing for them? Within this document, it kind of mentions parent involvement and part of that decision-making team. I'm very proud that we've worked hard to provide and kind of gather some stakeholders for a Title One committee. And we meet monthly with that group. So that includes all of our reading specialists, our coach for elementary schools and also involves some parents and they meet monthly. We have a big fall meeting and then we meet every month virtually or in person to gather that information from stakeholders. Looking at that information, we're able to really meet the needs of our students even more so because some things come to light that we're not always aware of within the school building. So the parents are able to contribute and then helps us to decide how to spend our funding and how to meet the needs of those resources. So that's just an FYI about Title One. But also we're going through a Title One and Title Three monitor this year. So we're working with federal funds and trying to show what we've done to meet those needs for those families and for our students, most importantly. We do go through a needs assessment every year to kind of sit back and kind of reevaluate what we're doing with our programs and how we need to rewrite the grant for the following year. In this document, I have listed involving parents and family members. This is a document that Title One puts out for federal programs just to say that we're meeting these needs and that they take part in this, the creation of this information. Provide the coordination and technical assistance and other supports necessary to assist in the capacity of participating in schools in the LEA and planning and implementing. Coordinating and integrating is an important part of this. Conducting with a meaningful involvement of parents, the evaluation even. So we send surveys to our families for that purpose. And really just overall, working together in a collaborative effort to meet student needs. This particular year, we're working with Virginia Literacy Act through DOE and we're working with VLP to kind of come together and look at our literacy program overall. Title One is not just about literacy though. It's also math components. So we're trying to involve our parents and engage some of those capacities as well. Some things that we do in our schools, our family engagement activities, like our literacy nights, we have the book bus that goes to events in the community and in our schools. We have our open house where our Title One reading specialist actually talks to families about what that program looks like. We have a Title One overview that we give to parents. And then we have family nights we started this year in our schools as a division. So we start one in the fall and we'll have one in the winter for that purpose. In addition, recently we had a Title Three family event. We had a dinner. We had a very good turnout for that event for families that are involved with ESL students. So trying to get them into the piece of this too. And that's also contributes to the Title One plan, the school-wide planning piece with family engagement. One thing that we're proud of that kind of correlates with this plan is that last year with Virginia Literacy Act starting for 2024, we palleted a reading plan conferencing piece with parents in our elementary schools. So for K three families that get Title One services with the reading specialist, we had a conferencing with parents and then we went through the data and explained the data, explained the testing, which we do anyway, to families. But this was every student that was serviced. In some capacity, we had that meeting. And then we gave them a report and gave them suggestions of what they could do in the home to help build the capacity of their students. So that money through this Title One was actually applied for those resources and what the parents could do to help their children. So that's part of this piece. And we are required to get a signature for a Title One plan for family engagement. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Kim? You need a signature from us on that. So what we will need to do, if you need that signature tonight, when we get to the items for action, we're going to need to amend the agenda and add an action item for signing this family engagement plan. Am I correct in that?
It looks like it, yes.
Because it doesn't have that on there. Whatever we need to approve or sign, then we need to put it in the action. Is that the only thing we need to have an approval? We need to have an approval for the.
We're going to pretend to say to have that family point, yes. Is that correct for the voting chain of.
All right. So we're going to have to, if we're going to do that, then we're going to have to, if we need to approve, we need to add that to the items for action.
Yep. And is that correct? Yep. Yep. We'll need a motion.
Yeah. Can we do that when we get to the items for action?
Yeah, I think we can do, we can amend it at the time. Because there's a stipulation in there that we approve it tonight and then it's distributed on the report.
Gina, is that right?
Yeah. I mean, technically she's just giving us information. So it could be a document in full date and you could just sign. We don't have to truly.
We don't have to formally adopt.
Yeah, it's kind of quasi, you know, like you're acknowledging, it's an acknowledgement, I guess. Probably might be a better way of putting it than just necessarily proof of.
Do we consent, everybody in agreement to?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It just, there was language in there that said the school board approved. That's, that's the only question I have about it. I think as long as it's legal with that, I'm fine with it.
I think if there was somebody against it, we might want to have more discussion and then do a vote or something like that. But I don't think anybody's against it. So we're okay with consensus, right?
We're good?
Okay. I have another question, though. We don't have to do similar process for the additional, the addition of the classes. We don't have to do similar process for the additional, the addition of the classes, right? That didn't need anything.
And we will add those courses to the document. We just wanted to provide a proper course first.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so when we talk about policies and all of that, one of the policies that we have got to update with the change in every organization month from July to January. We need to amend our policy BCA to read, we'll reorganize in January as opposed to July. So this will stand as the first reading of that. Is there a discussion, general agreement that we are okay with changing that policy to January from July? For reorganization, you good with that? So the plan that moved forward will be, we'll do the second reading of that policy, the first part of the meeting next month. And then once we have the second reading and then we will immediately vote on that as an item for action, then we will do a reorganization and then make that change at that point. Does that sound good?
Now, we, we don't actually have to read this into the record or anything, do we? It's just publicly available, right?
It's, it's there, I mean, it's, it's like all of our other policies. Once we sign, once we vote on it, voted into policy, both the changes to policy, then it will be a part of our policies with, online within our, within our system. So we also have, do you want to talk about this next first reading of the policy?
Of the? If I can pronounce it correctly. So one of the adjustments of the next, you know, the water bottles, the last couple of meetings have been the bearer of our existence. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the right. Do what? Oh, I can imagine. So.
You want me to start? So the really, the biggest change in this policy that we'll see is we strike the language for middle school and high school out of the policy. So it can then be available.
It will be written into all schools. So not even delineating, you know, for future references, not delineating the, the level. It will be simply our school buildings. And, and I guess technically that, because it's a school building, that would incorporate this office. You know, you just don't know. So that, we felt like it was really important, particularly in light of, of some things going on throughout the Commonwealth. So I appreciate the thoughtful nature on behalf of our office, not necessarily me. But, you know, making sure that we're incorporating and expanding what it is that we can do to support. So this will be the first reading for that, that particular inclusion and editing or adjustment of that policy. And again, on that, the second reading would be in December.
Yep, January.
January.
Any questions regarding to that? We can have discussion on that second reading or if you've got questions on the policy.
Just incredibly sad that we're at this point.
But we can't avoid it, we're here.
No, we cannot.
And we've got to, we've got to respond.
It's got to be proactive.
So now we are down to the school board budget input and consensus. I'm pretty sure we just finished this process, but here we are. So Shannon, are you going to lead us on this one?
Yeah, I will.
Ms. Irvin.
This is actually your opportunity to give the finance staff your guidance and input and do what you would like to see in next year's budget. I believe we have a copy of the goals that we have identified, both through the pathways for success and also through the school board goals. And the budget should be the funding mechanism to make those goals come true. And so what we'll be doing is identifying projects or programs that will lead us to student success, engaging, safe and healthy environments, operational excellence, highly qualified workforce and community engagement. So we'll be looking for items that support those goals. And if there are other things that you guys know that we have not thought of or you would like for us to investigate or cost out, we would love to have your input now so that when we come to you in January, the budget will identify those already.
I'll go ahead and say it from Turner Giles, we need more behavior specialists.
Well, I can say it for myself.
I would just do this with the big, what we want is, and you are always the one to bring it up.
Always. So feedback, that's the start of the feedback for, for Ms. Irvin.
And that's good that the, we did start as a pilot program using our ester funds, the hiring of a behavior specialist. And it's been a resounding success from the feedback we've gotten from our staff is how much help it has been. So the request has been to have four of them, one in every school. But we know that that might be a stretch in one year, but it would be a goal to work towards. Or hopefully they will be so successful that we won't need them and they'll phase themselves out. But we do need to respond with what we're seeing in the schools.
Especially on the lower levels coming into.
To be able to teach them whatever the strategies might be to utilize like. Ms. Claire or Ms. Turner Giles?
I thought you were going to say my part two.
No, I just figured I'd just get it out there.
Increasing salary scales. That's always number one on my list.
Fair enough. I have to agree with that one.
So whatever we can do to continue to make those adjustments. I know we did a lot, but there's still so much more work to do.
George, Shannon's talking about her goals as board members going into the budget and areas of focus that as a board we'd like for her to look at as she's crafting her budget.
You know, we still need to consider, I think, looking at, continue to mold the CIP plan for one, but you know, I think we need to do some focus on the, trying to think of the right word, behavioral.
Behavioral specialist? I mean, I think this is a pretty good, pretty much hits all the points that I would say, you know, with maybe, maybe emphasize, you know, from a CIP perspective or the building, you know, our buildings supporting, you know, the technology that we need to bring to the classrooms for, you know, not just CTE, but kids who want to go to, you know, the best colleges and the, you know, that we have here in, in Virginia and beyond. So any, anything that any student wants to do as much as we can provide that, you know, that's what, you know, what we want our buildings to be able to do. Obviously, we need to have as many plugs as we need, you know, to charge the laptops. We need the laptops, we need the per- per- metium boards, all of those technologies. We need a well-paid and, and highly educated staff to, you know, all of these things that are in here. So, you know, attend to the behavioral challenges that we have. And support of the families that we're doing already, you know, all of those things are so important. It's just such a, such a, you know, delicate thing that we do to bring these kids up. So, and give them what they need. And we're so challenged by the size of our, of our organization. But, I mean, so I think this is a great summary. I think it says a little bit of everything that we really need to focus on and, you know, and just more of it all.
I mean, I'm very satisfied with our goals. I mean, we all understand that this year, especially because of how some of the funding formula works, it's going to be tougher than, than, than has been in the past.
And I, you know, I say this to you often, we are an employer. I mean, our goal is to educate students that we are a large employer. And I'll continue to ask, are there ways that we can talk about employee health and wellness and wellness activities? And, you know, I know something even as simple as yoga, maybe that's not a big, but just things that help support our staff as our kids have more and more issues. Our, our staff are not insulated from that personally. So if there are things that just along those lines, you know, we've talked about that in the past. Doesn't have to be a lot, but just things that can be.
And we appreciate that because I know in working with Ms. Roydinger, she's been reaching out to, I think it's Anytime Fitness. And like, what can be done to support employees as we start into the new year? And, and so being conscious of, of all types of wellness. Ms. Irvin had discussed, you know, some financial wellness and some opportunities to support that. So, you know, we want to continue to build those things in. Because as, as we talked about, we added a standalone goal of the wellbeing piece. So, you know, we want to stand by that too.
So I think it sounds like student health and wellness, right? Is that student behavior? Financial?
Salaries can be financial wellness.
Okay, fair enough. Any, did I capture in technology?
Okay, so that was the operational part of the budget. If we could talk now about the CIP, because what I did is work the CIP in a kind of a different fashion, given the fact that the maintenance staff would be embarking on the high school renovation project. And so, Tammy, if you go to the very last page, it might be the easiest to, to talk about. That's the page that has all the projects in descending order with the color-coded. Typically, we have had the red section be within one year. And so I thought realistically, what our maintenance department could handle would be those grant funded projects, those eight big things that were, were going to be happening. And so I, I put all, those all as year one. And then we have some that need to happen every single year. They don't always do that because of lack of funding, but they really do need to get back on a bus replacement schedule. But we haven't been able to purchase buses in several years now. Did need to see funding at least for three to four buses every single year. In addition, you know, we are still transporting kids out of the county. And so reliable van transportation is important as well. Security upgrades, we will, as a division, seek funding for security upgrades throughout our, our facilities. The maximum we can get in a year is $250,000, is the $62,500 local match. So I put that in as a recurring because we're going to try every single year to make that happen. For transportation, they still have some buses that need some additional cameras. So that needs to happen until our buses are outfitted and capable. And then the high school renovation projects, I put in the next category within three years. And so what I did is that we had a number of other projects that were identified individually that would be covered under that umbrella of the $22 million project. So I just put it as a major renovation, $22 million. The other projects that were within that three-year mark, we've got Rockfish River Elementary School that is still using its original air conditioners. It opened in 1999, so we know that it's a matter of time. So we do need to address those. The HVAC control upgrades, I believe after we finish the high school, that the owner's school that will not have its controls upgraded is Rockfish. And we did that kind of purposely, that we were able to use the controls that were took out of Ty River when we upgraded theirs to keep Rockfish going. So we have some supplies on the shelf that will keep it operational. But eventually we will need to replace those. The old maintenance facility, you see the doors, you see the windows, you realize that they need to be replaced. Parking lot resealing, especially at the high school. If you go into the teacher parking lot, you see these great big cracks that have formed. And we do a lot of weed eating in the summer when cars run that party to keep the parking lot going. Safety ballards, you know, again, we've identified a need to protect the entranceways in particular of both our elementary schools there, there. Parking lot resealing and resurfacing at the other schools. Playground equipment, you know, we were using equipment, I think at Rockfish, maybe some that was from the old school before we moved over to the new school. It's aging. I know we have a slide at Ty River that is in disrepair. It's been out of commission for a while. So we do need to start working and identifying projects that we can actually come to fruition. Division One, we've got the door access software. This is the original software that operates all of the badge swipes. It's no longer supported, so if we had to replace a door access, it wouldn't work with the old software. So we're going to have to upgrade that. As long as they all continue to work, we're great. But when one breaks, we're not going to be able to upgrade it. The green ones were our desired project that we would like to see happen in the future, but they didn't have the same sense of urgency that the other ones did. We had the field house and this restroom, the concessions. We had the entranceway for the gym and auditoriums to make it visible to the public where to enter for those special programs. The overflow parking lot at Ty River, we have made that a little better as we have changed the parent drop-off to go all the way around the building. But it would be nice to also be able to pave that or to make the road more substantial. Air conditioning of Rockfish and Ty River, I know that that's been an issue. Ty River has been on the plan for a number of years. I mean, Rockfish has been on there for a number of years and had its, uh, like, uh, at Rockfish this year. Our maintenance department has asked for a replacement tractor so they can do some more work around the buildings and on the grounds, especially for snow removal. The high school school board replacement to use brighter digital LED lights so that it's easier to see while you're in the stands, especially as the light, the sunlight gets in the way sometimes. And then field grading at the middle school to make the field more usable and some outside features there. The total of all of those projects is $29,502,632. Sounds like a lot of money, but most of it thankfully is the high school project. Hopefully it'll be taken care of. Drop that back down to seven million, that'll be a lot easier to swallow. So again, the approach was just to make the, within one year, the things that we thought we could actually get done. But we can certainly change those and make them different priorities if you would like. That's, I recommend a, recommended program to you.
Any feedback for Ms. Irvin?
No, it's, it's a good list.
And I would just add, not necessarily specific to the CIP, just to keep in consideration, starting January one, the 2% increase for all employees. So as we, you know, we keep that in mind as we move forward into the next. It's a little odd that we have something starting in January as opposed to July one that we're used to, but that's also something to keep on our mind that we, I think, two months ago voted to approve, so.
Keep a straight Shannon, that all of these to be done.
Thank you, Shannon.
It's not all at once.
No, it isn't.
The door pass thing, isn't that part of like a safety?
Yeah.
So we could build that into next year's security grant.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. You don't want to wait.
Yeah, we can do the doors that way, but we can't do the ballers because they, they have some specifications that it has to be equipment. So the, the ballers just don't follow into that category.
Right.
But we could do the doors that way.
I mean, that's totally safety. And I would love to see the playgrounds pushed up a little.
Play, playgrounds?
Yeah, I'd like to see the playgrounds. They always get put down to the bottom. But I mean, when you talk about behavioral problems in the elementary schools, you know, getting outside and getting some of your energy out on some playgrounds are, you know, and I know those playgrounds came over from the old school, oh, some of them anyway, I know some of them did. So I just like, it seems like we could do something like that.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Hester, pathways to success.
All right. I'm surprised he didn't say no, if anybody wants to come home.
I never really.
Don't think I didn't notice it happened right before my comments. All right. All right. So, real quick, we're going to try this a little differently. I, I don't usually read it from my computer, but, you know, we're going to try something a little different. So, working through our administration program, we, we start to develop the adjusting for VRS, group life insurance, heading into budget season. So, we start to, to work there. Also, have been, it is a collective effort to work through all these different projects that we have going on and making sure that we stay up to date with our CIP. All the decisions that are made, that they tie together. And they're not just willy-nilly, you know, we want to do this and we want to do that. We want to make sure everything seamlessly goes together. An example would be, hey, we just renovated our rooftop, but we also had the foresight to know that if we wanted to add something like solar in the future, that we are prepared to do so. Or if we add HVAC units, that we have the, the ability to have the people who participated with the roof to be able to come back and address any needs. So, that takes a lot of forethought and planning to do that. Also, other, other items on budgets, looking to obtain a driver's ed vehicle in order to make sure that we continue to support our students. Ms. Irvin's office is also responsible for any kind of FOIA's and the FOIA response, particularly for vendor payment information, but for all FOIA's. And also, was it about a month ago? We did have the release of the LCI. And so, working through the composite index and understanding what is that impact going to be for us locally? And how do we factor that in as we build our budget? And so, instruction, instruction's been pretty busy. We are just completing our fall and winter testing, which I know everybody's going to be super excited about. All four of the schools were using some sort of assessment, whether it's end of course or winter growth assessments, recapturing any of our high school kids needing verified credits in order to graduate. CTE on September 15th. UVA recognized an apprenticeship graduating class. So, we had a young man, John, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, successfully complete this. And it was a pretty intensive process to be able to, a program of study and, in, I believe, the area of plumbing. So, something that we continue to support. As was mentioned earlier with the ICEV credentialing, we had several students who were incredibly successful in that process and in that endeavor. We had a lot of, you hear this quite frequently in the news, all-in, the all-in plan. So, we've submitted our plan and we begin to go full, full implementation. We've already been implementing a lot of different factors of the all-in plan from the beginning of the school year. In fact, prior to them even rolling it out, our summer school programs more than address what they're requiring. And so, we will be getting more after-school remediation and more full-blown of that plan moving forward. We'll provide more updates on that, I believe, in January so we can give you more detail. But it takes a lot of work to be able to work through this and coordinate. There's also continuing professional development that takes place. There was VASCD that took, that took place in December or late November, where we had three of our four principals able to attend, attend it along with our director of instruction. And the feedback from that, it was, it was incredibly important and educational for us to be able to do that. And to continue to work through the VLP and enacting the Virginia Literacy Act that has been placed forward. And then, all the different various supports that it takes place to do that. So, we appreciate the efforts of, of Ms. Douglas and all of our instructional leaders throughout the division to be able to continue to promote that. Human resources and communications, this is a big time for us. We've just collected all of our information about teacher of the year. And so, what's so important about that is that's when peers get to recognize peers and what they see the value that they add. And it's, and we're, that's exciting for me to be able to see that. It doesn't just get bestowed upon from someone else. It's your peers who are in the trenches with you. So, a lot of effort has gone into doing that and collecting that. We're hiring. There's, Ms. Choate in her department works really, really hard to be able to address any kind of staffing vacancies. And they come throughout the school year. We've actually just recently had some vacancies. And the collective effort to be able to fill this has been phenomenal and, and, and all around. You know, someone's at a, what was it, a biking? Yeah, yeah. Like a, a mountain bike and runs into someone who's like, oh, my wife might be interested in something. And it's just, it's funny how things shake out and being able to be mindful and listening and then acting immediately. And that's one thing I give everybody credit for is not sitting back and waiting, but being very proactive to address any kind of staffing needs. Excuse me. I could all choke up over that now. So, I, also, the recruiting efforts are underway through support staff positions. And also, today was the last day for intent forms. So, we get our who intends to return back to us. So, that enables us to start planning for the future, to know what vacancies we will have for next year. So, that's really helpful. And it, and it takes a lot of organization to, to kind of go through that. People personnel, Ms. Royding, her, Ms. Roydinger and her department, being able to really work through. Ms. Deno and her class really did a cool activity this year where they put on kind of a Thanksgiving lunch or brunch or dinner. And so, being able to walk through, like, getting the ingredients, what does it take to prepare it? And really be able to go through this. And so, I just appreciate those efforts because it, it is very much an inclusive effort, including students who maybe sometimes might not be involved in those activities. So, I appreciate that. Also, Ms. Roydinger collaborated with Ms. Canal for school nutrition to be able to put on a staff wellness event through the Time For Me Thursdays. This particular event was yoga. So, we had some participants being able to participate in that. And it was really, it was really cool to be able to see. Also, expanding opportunities for students in, like I said, the adaptive curriculum and also going through Region 10 trainings. Technology, with technology, Promethean Active Panel Boards continue to be a project that we are integrating. You know, it just seems like every time we get more panels in and get them integrated into the classrooms, there's someone else saying, hey, I'd like to have one. And really, they are a great way to, to promote that kind of learning that we need to be taking place. Continue to update our security cameras and installation. We talk about the focus and prioritizing of our safety and security. And that's something that is very much collaborative effort throughout a lot of the departments in central office to be able to support that. We have a, a student who is participating in a Blue Ridge, uh, Blue Ridge Virginia Governor's School project that's including trying to build a makerspace. And so, working with technology to be able to support that in the library media area, to be able to support giving students different experiences that kind of support the STEAM mentality, which is great. Cybersecurity updates. We live in a world where we have to constantly be vigilant of our cybersecurity. Just something, even this week, we're recognizing that they have a, the ability to look at attacks. And it's really, really cool. And we can see who's tried to access networks, who's tried to access certain things. So, I appreciate Mr. Cargill and his team to be really on the ball with addressing, paying attention to this and then act, really responding immediately to be able to address any of those issues. We had a wonderful donation from UVA. A lot of different types of items, you know, copiers, things of that nature. So, we're going back through and being able to, how do we distribute? How do we bring this into our buildings and use it? And also, they attended a, a three-day Virginia Society Technology Education. So, that professional development, we talked about the growth, not just the growth of our students, but the growth of all of our, all of our community within our schools is, our staff all have an opportunity to be the best that they can be. Maintenance? Maintenance has been working on to secure the bids. You've just heard a pretty thorough outline of what we want to build into the CIP and what our, our grant projects are going to be. That takes time to be able to go through and get that. But they've also been spending a lot of times meeting with these individuals to get these proposals and get these bids. Now, somehow or another, they're able to fit into that, working and supporting the toy lift, driving out to Charlottesville. Thank you to, to Danny Johnson, Danny Johnson, right, for being the box truck to go pick these items up that are going to come back and benefit our students. And so, I just appreciate, you know, that, that willingness to do whatever it takes to support all the various things that we have going on in our division. They've been making a lot of improvements to various gates and fences all throughout the, the campus. And then, also, Mr. Campbell and his crew were super helpful in being able to distribute for the Great Turkey Drop of 2023, which is when all of our staff and employees were able to get a turkey from Kelly Bronns. And so, we're so appreciative of the team effort that it took to do that. And of course, being one of the primary individuals staying on top of the roof project. For transportation, really have been testing out a new Zonar Systems ground traffic control, which allows to be able to monitor where our buses or where our cars are, you know, like through a GPS. And so, it can look at GPS locations, speed, vehicle diagnostics. So, if there's something that goes on with the vehicle, it can identify it. I think there was just recently a coolant leak in the, in the software system was able to pick up on this, which is huge for being able to pick them that early and then redirecting or replacing or getting a substitute bus. Also, Taylor Ashley and several of his drivers were just crucial in being able to go out to the Kelly Bronns farm, pick up 350 turkeys. You see the turkeys all sitting, you know, politely in their seats facing forward like they should and not eating. The box is closed. And so, they went in there, we loaded it and took them out to the three sites and then unloaded them just so they could be distributed to our staff in time for Thanksgiving. So, I greatly appreciate just the willingness to do whatever it takes. It was pouring down rain that day and freezing cold. So, you know, it wasn't like it was in great weather and, and tons of, tons of fun, but it was definitely well worth it. And then, being a part of the group to enter in a float for the annual Livingston Christmas Parade in the book bus. And so, a collaborative effort with a, a lot of our teachers to be able to do this and walk with it and being able to incorporate all of our mascots. So, I just appreciate that, that full division support of all the different activities and then bringing in the community to it. Food nutrition, this is a, this is a busy time of year for our school nutrition services workers because they're putting on things like family meals, whether it's for Thanksgiving or Christmas at the different schools, where they are assisting with the, with the schools to put on these family, community events. And being able to really support. So, the November 16th was the Thanksgiving meal across the county where families were invited to come out to the elementary schools and do that. They also have added high-tech control combination oven up here just to make sure, more efficient and effective at the high school and the middle school. And then, on the 30th, like I mentioned before, with our people personnel, I'm sorry, people personnel, the staff wellness yoga event. So, we appreciate the, the willingness to collaborate. And for this past month, student breakfasts that were served, about 11,268. For the lunches, 17,389. And for supper meals, things that take place after school, whether providing remediation or providing other instructional supports, we're still feeding our kids. We all know, if you're hungry, you're not going to be at your best and you're not going to be thinking about meth or really much of anything if you're too hungry. So, I really appreciate that effort. Community engagement events, we've talked, this, this is a very intentional. And I just appreciate our principals and our administrators and our teachers and all of our staff. You know, our bus drivers get into it. You know, didn't anything, if you see them driving around in their reindeer antler and, and whatever it is. And it takes that, you know, it takes all of us kind of really having fun with this. But it sure is nice to know that it's noticed and it's appreciated. And then, it will positively impact what they do. So, we see the, the turkeys being delivered. The, we had several entrances into the Livingston Christmas Parade and Winters. So, we had a first-time entry of our elementary school's color guard. And they, I, through, they're not shy about bragging about beating the marching band. So, it's just kind of funny to see all of that. There's been a lot of effort through, from Thanksgiving activities to the winter holiday activities is bringing our families, bringing our kids into the fun. We had, like I said, many entrance into the parade. It was an unusually warm evening and a very quick-moving bus. So, you know, we got our steps in. And then, last but not least, but bringing our families in to be able to see our, our performances with our corps and band students. And that was, that was really enjoyable to be able to see that. So, I just appreciate being able to brag on everything that our staff and students are doing. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Questions or comments for Dr. Hester? A lot of stuff, good stuff going on, you highlighted. Thank you a lot as we close out the year. So, Items for Action, our first item is a field trip request for the FFA Block and Bridle Horse Contest for February 22nd to the 24th. Any questions in regards to that trip? Barring any questions, can I have a motion to approve the field?
Can I suggest we just approve both of them at once or we can't do that?
Just doing separately for right now.
I move that we accept it or that we approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone abstain? Okay, that first field trip request is approved. Second field trip request is FFA Legislative Day to Richmond, January 24th to the 25th. If there are any questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve that field trip request?
I move that we approve that field trip request to Richmond.
All those in favor, say aye.
Yes, second first.
Oh, second. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? Okay, that field trip request is approved. We do need to go into closed session for personnel. So, if I can have a motion to go into closed session.
What are the purposes?
Personnel.
Just personnel?
Do we need the, it just occurred to me with the renovations, do we need that to be approved?
Yes.
The, the money, the renovation?
So, we need a motion to approve the 2.5, the?
Yeah, the 2.5 million in the progress within the, to be.
Yep.
Yeah, we need to amend the agenda for.
Can I have a motion to amend the agenda to include the budget request approval?
I move that we amend our agenda under Items for Action Number Nine to include the grant monies for the capital improvement projects as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? You abstain? Okay, that item has been added to our Items for Action. Now, we are in the Items for Action.
I move that we approve that 2.5 million dollar budget.
You got to give the exact numbers.
What's your exact number, Shannon?
And we need to do, we also need to, I think we also need to approve the additional contingency money that goes with the grant money.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
That's the total.
It's being moved out of operations in the CIP.
That would be the?
So, I think we have to approve that.
I think that.
What's that? Am I right? Don't we need to do that?
To, are we moving the operating, lending from operating?
I thought it was all. So, we'll need the full, the full 2.466201.
All right. I move that we approve the use of $2,466,201.84 to do the improvements to the buildings as reported or as suggested.
Was a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
No.
Okay. It's approved.
You're dear enough, aren't you? I can see you flexing. I can see it.
I know, I'm talking to him, what he was doing.
I just want to make sure the motion's right. Is that requested?
Okay. All right, good enough. So, now, may I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
But it's being spent on capital improvement. It's not being spent on operations.
Okay, can I, are we okay with that or do we need to?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, I mean, I think they're fine.
We're just talking semantics.
Can I have a motion?
I move that the board go into closed session to discuss and consider the personnel report and other confidential personnel matters as authorized by Virginia Code 2.23711A1 for purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Anyone abstain? Okay, we are now in closed session.